Welcome, everybody, to the October 22 meeting of the Escanito Planning Commission. Going to call it to order. Stand with me if you would pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have Commissioner Wyler?
Here.
Commissioner Cohen?
Here.
Commissioner Romo?
Here.
Commissioner Span?
Here.
Noting the absences of both Commissioner Wyler McNair and Commissioner Garcia, do we have Commissioner Watson?
Present.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve our minutes for our last meeting? The motion to pass the minutes?
I second.
Yes, Chair, thank you. There is one written communication submitted to each of the planning commissioners pertaining to item G2 Nutmeg Homes, and it is a statement of support.
Thank you. Future neighborhood meetings?
None to report.
Oral communication, if anybody in the audience wants to speak about something that's not on tonight's agenda, they've seen done, we'll go right into the public hearings. Before we open it up, does anybody have anything to disclose? Commissioner Wheeler and I were at the scoping meeting for the Nutmeg Homes. That's second agenda. I'm going to do it now.
Then, yeah, that's...
One of the things I'd like to discuss that I did attend the scoping meeting.
No, I'll make disclosure as well.
The three of us.
The applicant reached out to me, I did meet with the applicant, spoke regarding the project, consequences, and that was the extent of that.
Thank you. Okay, G1, modification conditional use permit, PHG 19-0017.
Yes, Commissioners. Item 40 tonight is a modification of a previously approved conditional use permit for the new life of the church. They wish to convert the single-family residence that they had purchased within the previous year and convert that into a use that would support various uses at the church. The primary use would be, again, the counseling center and use the facility also for indoor and lower intensity outdoor gathering spaces. Quite a history of the church and the adjacent property. The approximately four acre church complex is located here on the southern side of Central Park. Surrounding uses vary from undeveloped land to single-family homes. On the west is the Radiant Medical Center and Acacia Animal Hospital further to the west. This is Interstate 15. That's about a higher location in the project site. The church gets access, primary access, from Central Park Way here on the north. It's developed with their main sanctuary building, separate center building, and various parking areas around the project site. They have 191 parking spaces around the project. They also have access and agreement with the adjacent Radiant Center for additional parking spaces if they need to use them, but they provide foreign access of their minimum for existing project and for being proposed to use. This is the subject site here in this area here. This is a single-family residence, built with a split-level home. It takes its primary access from Alexander Drive here. They would like to use that home, fold it into the campus, and as I indicated, use it for burner uses, for family counseling services, office uses, and multipurpose meeting areas. This is a view from Alexander Drive meeting at the site. This is looking north along Alexander Drive, residential street. Unapproved, does not have a preferred side of it than the pavement that provides access to the single-family residential homes. I note this driveway here, this driveway will be retained as part of the project, but the northern driveway will be removed and not used anymore for this proposed conversion. This is looking north along, or, sorry, south along Alexander Drive towards the site. You can see the front of the property here. This is the front elevation of the home, and this is the rear size of the home. This is, it's a split-level structure with a ground-level garage, which will be removed. Garage will be removed and used for multipurpose meeting space. This is the parking lot of the adjacent church, looking up at the rear of the home. Primary pedestrian and disabled access will be provided from this area, and all parking for, or most of the parking for this unit is provided on the adjacent church site. This is looking at the various rear elevations and rear garden of the home. The project includes the conversion of this approximately 2,100 square foot of the home. The project components include, number one, restricted access off Alexander Drive. And that was one of the initial staff concerns and also concerns from the initial neighborhood meeting. We had the project was hottest effect traffic and neighborhood in that building. And what the applicant has proposed is to eliminate the existing driveway along the north property here and re-mix that area. Fence the property, low height, concealed, decked fence, and restrict access to the southern driveway mainly for deliveries and for onsite ADA and guest space if this is determined to be highly necessary. There are ADA spaces around the church complex, and primary access from the members or purchasers of the church that utilize this facility is proposed to come from the west of the church site through a new ADA pathway here. Early on the process of the applicant, the neighborhood meeting, and the church, approximately 10 residents attended that meeting. Their primary concerns at that time were, in question of commercial type uses within the residential neighborhood, what compatibility impacts would that have to the neighborhood, the traffic, noise, property values? One of the concerns also, on the end of early design, was the applicant, the church, was at this area here, the site, was going to have a driveway attached to the church and the new facility. And the neighbor to the north expressed his concerns about additional traffic and parking spaces on the site. Applicant took the project back and eliminated that, since they have sufficient area on the site. It also eliminated the grading that was proposed in this area, so on retaining wall, and they don't have to raid this end of the site. Also allowed for a new six-foot high roof fence along this area of property line to provide additional visual and annoying upper to the adjacent residents to the north, which actually sits at a lower elevation than this project site. In the rear of the home, they will be doing an additional small, less than 200 square foot commission, and constructing a new covered walkway and entrance from the church site. They would like to have primary access and views of this home from the church site and maintain the front of the home in its more residential setting to maintain that intensity and residential use from the residential neighborhood. Quickly go through the floor plans. The upper level, we primarily use our office spaces, the meeting areas for the family, marriage counseling. It will be staffed by church members, professional service members or staff. It'll be only open to church members, not open to the public. And you can see the areas that will be used, the multipurpose spaces, meeting areas, retain the kitchen. This will be the new entry on the western side of the facility facing the church. The lower area that contains the garage, that will be converted to a multipurpose space. The existing garage doors will be removed and replaced with new glass door doors and windows surrounding the facility to match those windows and doors used in the main sanctuary of the church facility. The architecture of the home will remain the same. This shows the converted lower garage area, the new glass entry doors, new windows. It will put additional stone flapping on the facility, similar to the flapping that's on the fireplace now. The front of the home remains the same. New paint, scuttled to match the colors and texture of the existing sanctuary building, adding some additional store, or glass front door and stone plating around that. On the rear, they wanted to upgrade the rear so it looks like a formal entry. On that side of the home, this is where they will be putting the new colored entry with stone columns and the new glass door in that location there. With that, staff is recommending approval of the project and a resolution approving the modification to conditional use permit, and also adoption of the environment determination that project was exempt from environmental influence with CECL. That concludes the staff's resolution.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, Staff?
Real quick, there is no parking in the front on the residential side for anybody that's going to be in, coming in from the church, is that correct?
They will be using only this southern entry here, maintain the existing paved driveway for deliveries, they get a delivery to the site, FedEx, mail, so forth. And also, including in this area here, ADA access parking space for one car.
But, but that would be it? There would be no parking allowed on the street during that?
Parking is not on the street right now, as you can see in the photos here. You would have to probably park, have it on the way, on the project site.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jay, for another great presentation. A question, I saw that, you know, the kitchen area and the fire pit, and it looks very smartly designed. I just wondered, though, is there any language in there that prevents or addresses the applicant from leasing, you know, the space, like some churches do with their halls, leasing it for events or that kind of thing?
There actually is not a restriction regarding that.
Okay, thank you.
I guess the question is, could that be added to it?
It could be added as a commission by the planning commissioner.
Thank you. Any other questions, Staff? Okay, I have three speaker slips here. When you come up, if you state your name for the record, and please try to keep your comments to three minutes, if you could. Mario Escobar?
So, yeah, I've lived in Mario Escobar. I've lived in Alexandria since 2004, pretty much across the street from this particular house. And basically, this, you know, was a very secluded, quiet area for many years as far as, you know, as long as we've been there. Since the church has come in, you know, we've definitely dealt with a lot of action. A lot of people in and out, you know, hearing the bull horns, you know, on Sunday mornings and, you know, whatever they're doing with the church. But bottom line, I think what our concerns are is really the traffic. So, you know, down the street, it's a very quiet street. You know, as you see, there's not many residents, you know, on the street, but we just feel that the traffic, and also the main concern as well, is we are always in a small set of systemic system. And all of our houses do not currently, correct, this is a 1950 neighborhood, and this particular house was leaking sewage into our yards for years as the previous milky place, Doug Hill, failed to open. We went through a lot of groups to try to get this all fixed, and that was with four people living in the home. And we're talking about thirty to forty, maybe more, showing overboard whatever they're, you know, are planning to do. And we just don't feel that it's really a safe environment for the street. We don't know how the systems are reacting, and so that's really what our main concerns is, as a neighbor. So, again, the main thing I really think is this house, where it's used, we heard it's going to use for add to the center as well. Just concerning, because, you know, that puts you in a position where you're dealing with situations to be immediate residential, a lot of kids, little kids, parents, two families that moved in, so that's my position, and for whatever it's worth. The churches are good. It's a good church. We've all, you know, lived there, it's been there for about five years now. We have no problem with the church itself, but also to take this, this house, which is one of the favorite homes in the area, and take it off the map, I mean, it's illuminating the conflict of our street, and we believe that without our homes are going to be back as well.
David Escobar?
Thanks for the opportunity to give us residents the chance to speak to you today. I just wanted to voice my opinion. I've been in Escanito for a while now. Bought my first house here as a first-time homeowner off 11th Avenue over there by Escanito Boulevard. And, you know, I've been through this situation before with living across the street from a church and having a lot of the events and city council, or activities going on and having a lot of disruption. You know, my voice coming here today is I've seen the traffic, I've heard the noise, and that's exactly why I moved away from the other, my first house that I bought, which I loved. Found this, found this little community, this street, that's been there for a long time, and my brothers live there, I know some other families. It's been, it's been a really great street to live on, it's a great community being here in Escanito, and I've been seeing a lot of, a lot of young families move in. I have three young kids myself. I have a, I have a nine-month-old, a three-year-old, and a six-year-old. And it's just a great street to be able to, you know, walk down and ride their bikes. I don't like the fact of taking a house off the grid and having this kind of, having these parties, these loud events, and then having more trucks and traffic come through, which I think is a, is going to, it's going to be unsafe also for our children in there. That's basically why I'm coming here today. They also, the church, I don't have any problems with the church. I think community and church events can be great, it's a great way to involve people, but as far as coming onto the street and taking a whole house away and having a lot more traffic like that is, I'm voicing against it. I'm very against this on, on the street that I planned to live on for years. I've done a lot of work to my property, try to upgrade things and make the community great, make the street great, and I'm just, I'm really voicing against it. Had a couple more things to say, but they're going out of my mind right now, but thank you again for, for the time on listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I have one slip here, but it doesn't say which agenda item they want to speak on. Gabe Winter?
Yeah, sorry, I have a friend on the line.
Was that for the first?
Yes.
Okay.
Evening, everyone. I'm Gabe Winter. I live across the street from this residence for about 12, 13 years now, and I think like what you were saying, our main concern is the sewer, is the septic system and the legion. That, that many people in there, I just don't know how it's beautiful. I mean, I know they put a new septic system in, but I don't care how big the tank is to the property, that's not, you know, a zone for that many people. Kind of a commercializing this building, right, in the residential area, the type of thing. And the parking, you know, the parking, I see what they're doing there. I mean, like you said, with traffic, traffic is kind of an issue. If they do keep it that way and it doesn't get used, I mean, I don't see that being a problem. It's just the sewer. I mean, sewer's down at Central Park right there on the corner. What does it take to get sewer up to our houses, up just past that house to get, for everybody to have the opportunity to tie in in future? We're all sitting all the way up to that, that it turns into a counter. So, that was one question I had. That, and then, yeah, we have kids, I have a seven-year-old, we have, you know, their kids are little tiny ones, and they play on the street. The traffic is kind of an issue with that. If everything comes from that side of the church, that's fine. I mean, we like the church too, and, you know, it would look nice. It's just a commercializing this residential, residence is what it seems like to me at the moment. So, yeah, if we can get sewer up there, everybody can tie in, I think that's a feasible thing to do if they were on the sewer. That's all I have. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. I have one slip from Jill Cleveland, who says she does not want to speak, but she's in favor of the project. Have you changed your mind? That's all the speaker slips I have. Anybody else want to speak on this? If you'd fill out a slip when you get done.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Robyn Lee, and I serve as one of the pastors of the church. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. If I could just, first of all, thank you, Jay, for the wonderful presentation that you did. I think it really captures the, you started with the use of this house. If you were able to see what the house looked like, and I don't know if you saw a couple of the pictures, it really was a rundown house that was practically vacant, vagrants, there were drug addicts, it was just in really, really bad condition. By the time when it's all said and done, we imagine we'll be putting up to $200,000 to renovate the home, that we believe will just, of course, beautify the home, but also increase the overall value of the home, which will increase the value of the neighborhood. Several concerns were raised. The septic concern was raised on a few occasions, as the gentleman before just mentioned. Am I allowed to address some of the concerns that were raised?
Sure.
As you mentioned, we did put in a new septic, septic system, and the thing is, we imagine that the intensity of the use will actually be fairly low. Our primary times of use will be on Sunday morning for Bible studies, on Wednesday mornings for Bible studies, and Wednesday evenings for Bible studies. Those would be the main times, where anywhere from potentially fifteen to thirty people maximum will be there for a time span of maybe about an hour and a half to two hours. Those are the primary intensive uses for those limited windows. And then, we also imagine that this would be used as an office space for staff. We would have two pastors as well as two counselors that would be there for normal business hours, and they would be seeing clients who have counseling needs, but these are general counseling, marital counseling. Our counselors are not trained and not specialized to do complicated types of counseling with drug addicts and the difficult, complicated cases. We're not staffed, that's, we're not, we wouldn't be offering those type of services. And also, we would have just general office use, you know, for our normal business hours, where there may be some meetings with two or three people. So, the intensity of the use is going to be very low, which we think will address the septic concern. I heard about battered women, that came up at the neighborhood meeting, and we have no plans on this being a shelter for battered women in any way. That's never been discussed. That's not something that the church wants to take on. We really do see this as a place that will serve the community, so far as we have church members who live around this community. This would be a place for a good conversation, for Bible studies, meaningful relationships and connections to happen, which was part of the design of the home. We've got a fire pit area where people can gather and have conversations together. We have a community garden where people can plant, plant, you know, vegetables and whatnot, and just have a real sense of community, and that it would really feel like a residential, feel like a residence. Traffic was mentioned on a couple of occasions. Again, our intent is that the entrance into this house will be the church, which is why we're happy with the, you know, that the overhang in front of the entrance, is that will be the main entry point into the home. On rare occasions, we could have gave on the, said, Alexander said, would anyone be able to not? We're not telling our people to enter that way, people will never enter through the church entrance. So, the concern of the traffic, the cars coming up and down the street, we don't believe that would be a concern. The question of renting, leasing, you know, subleasing the home to another event, resale all makes that very, very difficult to do, because once we go down that path, and so we want to open up even another nonprofit, by law, we have to make ourselves open to all kinds of other organizations that are wanting to use it, that would not align with our values, I believe. So, that is not part of the plan at all, that's never been discussed. And, you know, at the heart of this is that we're a church, we want to be good neighbors, and we believe how we can care of this home, especially a lot of the concerns that have been raised, if we are not good neighbors, it affects our message. And so, the last thing we want to do is take advantage of the neighbors, have them dread that the church did this. It would be better for us if we had purchased the home, if we can do that. We would never compromise anything for our message. And so, our sincere desire is to be a blessing to the neighbors. We want to be good neighbors, and to the extent that, you know, if everything goes through, if there are concerns, we would be very open to helping, conversations with the neighbors. So, that's the heart of which we have purchased the home, and if we're trying to renovate the home, that we believe will be, will be beneficial to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, you already spoke.
Is there a way to say one more thing at any point in time, Jim?
I'll give you one minute.
Okay. As far as the pastor stating that, you know, upgrading the home, basically to the church's benefit, it's really not giving the chance for the community to allow another family to come into a residential area, especially hoping a young family that would normally buy in those areas close to all the schools that are around it. So, that's, that's taking away, you know, we got, we got pretty much a whole street that that house is on, that every, you know, almost 99% is voicing against it. So, basically, it doesn't have our blessing. You know, we want, we would like a family to move in there and be part of our street. I mean, that's, that's how it is right now. They also, just mentioned, they also bought another home that is directly behind my home, which is on that street. And family, family is in there, but there also is a lot more people in there, a lot more traffic. I think about eight people are living in there, and I can't prove that, I'm not coming here.
Okay, thank you, thank, thank you.
And that's what's going on.
We're not talking about that tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, one, sorry, a question for the applicant.
Okay, yep, can you come up?
Thank you for speaking to us tonight. Have a question, and I understand today's uses and restrictions that would probably preclude you from doing things like battered women's, crisis counseling, or housing, drug counseling, and event rentals, which I feel like could exacerbate the situation with the neighbors. Would you be willing to stipulate as a condition?
Absolutely.
To those things?
Absolutely.
You would? And then, one question, Jay. I did read the staff report, I saw that the septic was replaced. Was it scaled for this use? I, I did read the staff report. I saw that the septic was replaced. Was it scaled for this use?
Um, I'm going to have to defer to the applicant on, on what they put in there. I think it was the typical, uh, septic type reach out system.
Can I ask her?
He was very involved in placing the septic system in. This is Paul Hatch. He serves as one of the leaders of our church.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, it was a 1,500 gallon raw tank put in the backyard and the existing tank was sorted bill. And then they, I hope it was an 80-foot siege bed down through the roof.
Okay. Yeah, how, how does that compare to what was there prior?
What was there prior was, um, the original owner had built an addition on the house and had built that addition halfway over the existing septic that had failed. And some of the neighbors had said that how he had tried to put something else in and, um, it wasn't approved and that's.
And does it look like it now? It's resting place, for lack of a better term. But that 1,500 gallon tank is to sort of the west side of the fire pit. Is that correct?
Uh, that's correct.
Where's the leach field?
The leach field goes down, um, the street. Across that park driveway this year, so it could start right here.
Did you design the system?
Uh, no, the, uh, system was designed by Luke Ostrander.
With CALS, I assume? Or with CALS, I assume?
Uh, yes.
And, and they scaled it with that in mind, the uses you were talking about?
I, I mean, uh, it was, he worked out accounting. It was approved by accounting, but not approved for this.
Okay. Through the chair, if I may, uh, enlighten to the process. Typically with the grading permit plans, uh, the city will require, um, a letter from the Department of Animal Health who has jurisdiction over the size and capacity of septic systems. So, the official review of the use and intensity of use on its septic system, whether as implemented in advance of that or potentially upgraded, there would be clarity by the Department of Animal Health at that time. Uh, so there, there still is another mechanism in place to make sure it's sized to meet the capacity needed of the facility before project implementation.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I also say that there is no longer 84-inch shower facilities, so just to, to know what this is.
I'd like to clarify that too. There's also a condition, uh, for the project. They have to receive final county, uh, county approval for that septic system, uh, to support the use. If they can't, then they would have to fix sewer objects.
Thank you. Hey, does anybody else in the audience want to speak on this? I'm going to close the public hearing. I have one quick question. I don't know if you'd be the one to answer it or not. As far as if the neighbors wanted to bring sewer line, at this point in time, would they have to form a Melrose? Would they have, is, is there any plans with the city to extend the sewer system up that street?
Um, yeah, we, primarily sewer gets, uh, extended up into neighborhoods, um, by development or individuals who desire to, to tie on to the sewer. And so, um, you know, so if a developer or an individual extends the sewer up, uh, to serve their property, then they can file for repayment and be repaid by, uh, all the adjacent owners who subsequently would tie on and make use of that sewer. So, that's primarily how sewer gets extended across town. There, there is the, uh, ability to form assessment districts. And, you know, in the seventies, I think we saw a lot of that, um, brought, you know, sewer to large areas. But, uh, it takes a lot of organization, a lot of upfront money and, and, uh, so we don't typically, we haven't seen those in, in many years now. Thank you. Well, I, uh, I, I understand where you're coming from as far as taking this off the market, but there's no guarantee that if a family moved in there that it's going to be a family. It could be one person. It could be a, uh, it could turn into another drug house. So, there's no guarantee what kind of people you're going to get moving in there. I would much rather, if this was my neighbor, I would much rather see the church live in there than wondering who's going to move into it and what it's going to look like down the road. I'm very confident that they do want to be good neighbors. And looking back on the septic system, when we bought our house in the late seventies, it was built in the fifties. It was on septic and, uh, every time it rained, the driveway would ooze this green stuff. And we thought it was just an underground coming down from the grove up behind us. And it wasn't until we ripped the driveway out that we found out that it was, the whole leach field in the backyard was completely unfunctional and everything was going through one line that ran up underneath the driveway. So, everything was just pouring out. So, you think that it might be this problem causing your problem, but there's a pretty good chance that this is not really, really the problem that is causing your septic to have its own problems, especially on an old system. As far as the traffic up Alexander for deliveries, we get at least three deliveries a day from Amazon and there's only one person in, in our house that's placing orders. So, if this house was to be occupied by a family of young teenagers that were ordering on Amazon, you could, you could possibly see 10 stops a day of deliveries. So, I don't re, I think the fact that it's going to be church-related is actually going to lower the potential for traffic on the street, especially since they're all coming in the back. I did go out there and look at it and my, my only thought was if there's no church traffic coming in through the front, I don't see any problem with it. I think that the improvements to the house are only going to add to the values of the neighbor, neighbors around, even if there's not a comp on it. Um, for that reason, I'm going to support.
Uh, right now, Jay, I'm, I'm assuming this is not the main office for the church. I'm assuming there's another main office. Can we put a stipulation that no deliveries will be allowed to this location? They will all be directed to the main office instead? So, that'll eliminate that whole problem of deliveries there. If this was in a residential neighborhood and a different operator purchased this home, could they conceivably create a, a retirement facility? I forget what they're called, but a, a home where seven beds could actually be, six beds could be put in there to have, as a retirement facility as well, which would actually intensify the uses even more?
Do that by right or, um, minor CP to?
Right. So, so having this here, although not preferable, is preferable to a lot of other rights that they could use on this particular home at this point in time?
There are many uses by right that could be put in there.
That would intensify the use beyond this? And the only thing that I understand is going on that should be going up and down that driveway is the ADA. Is that correct? If, if we go ahead and limit deliveries to the other one theoretically? So, that should help eliminate some of that. I noticed there was a gate there. Will that be open all the time or will that be closed except for those rare times? And be closed and locked? Okay.
Could I interject just one? When you say no deliveries, I'm sure there'll be some deliveries to the house. You'll have.
Or.
Right. Right. But not, I don't, I don't know how we could put some kind of limit to that. Is there a way we can do that or is that just impossible?
Yeah, I guess you could include some general language regarding whether the private deliveries, you know, other than business.
Okay, okay. Right. So, just not the?
Bed service.
Right, right, okay. And the, the use, the hours of usage would still be the same as any residence, which would be limited to 10 o'clock, 10 p.m. for noise and that kind of stuff. Is that correct? How does that work?
We have a noise ordinance.
Okay.
But however, uh, the police department responds to a lot of this noise and 10 o'clock is not a magic number.
Okay.
For the police department. They can, they're not supposed to be after that. They can shut down things sooner.
Sooner than that. Okay. All right. Thank you.
May I make a motion? So, I'd like to move to approve with, uh, with, uh, three steps. One being, uh, not to be used by this operator, any future operator as battered women, drug and alcohol, uh, counseling, and, uh, no, no event rentals, uh, within my recommendation. I would ask Commissioner Romo if he could tack his on as well, or how, I'm not sure how you would word that.
A little help from you, Jay, on how I might word that?
I want to, I want to defer to Mike.
Oh, wow.
Who can I defer to? Well, just to speak to the motioner's stipulation, there is already a recital of the condition that the scope of the request, um, can be used for that or should not be modified unless, um, approved by the planning commission or through a CP modification request. The site itself, uh, is in a residential zone, but it is transitioning into a non-residential type of use, which is permitted by our code. But the removal of the parking provisions, the garage, um, kind of terminates or extinguishes its ability to convert to things that might have otherwise been permitted, um, as a residential use, like where some are preemptions with the transitional housing, which you were alluding to. Um, so the condition, uh, that was recommended is, is, is fine. But I believe there are already some protections in place to ensure that that would not occur. Uh, with respect to, uh, the deliveries, um, the conversation previously alluded to what could occur under the existing zoning and, uh, there are obviously no limitations to family size and families do order a lot of things online and that's a growing, emerging area of, of the marketplace. Uh, we also have home-based businesses, which do also authorize a certain number of deliveries per day. I think the major home occupation permit, which is, um, permitted in a specific area of the city, allows up to not to exceed eight deliveries in any given day. Um, so if the request is to prohibit or ban deliveries altogether, that might be very difficult to enforce or monitor, uh, since they occur kind of temporally, like one event. It's hard to catch that during the day. Uh, but if, uh, the commission's interested in putting some sort of limitation, uh, there can be some general language that encourages, uh, deliveries to occur through the main campus site that then can be taken across to the other, uh, property. And there would be obviously some exclusions because if there's furniture or contractor work, um, at the startup, that obviously would need to occur on-site where there's easier loading. But certainly if, uh, you want to fold something into the motion that talks about more general, um, types of deliveries, uh, and I, I would probably recommend that the, the first condition not necessarily discriminatory apply to a certain type of user, just say transitional housing or, or, uh, other types of housing type of need. So, that's my feedback on the two conditions so far.
Sure. And I think I could, I could certainly broaden that up with your guidance. I guess my, um, concern is, I mean, they sound like a very successful church. And, uh, if or as they outgrow the use, and as churches do grow, that I'd like to see just that language, but perhaps in a more general sense, since you're saying, I don't mean to reinvent the wheel. The language is pretty much there, uh, but that condition to, uh, to run with it for the next option, if that were the case. So, yeah, uh, help me out, uh, Mr. Strong, with some language. Just, just go with, uh, no transitional or housing or?
Uh, yeah, in terms of being more vague, instead of singling out specific types of transitional housing, I would just be more specific to maintaining the, the details of the scope should be unaltered unless authorized by the planning commission and shall not be used for, uh, any activity that exceeds, uh, information that was provided by the applicant, including overnight staying, uh, activities or events, special events that would be a nuisance to surrounding property owners.
Okay, one's more from the top. Okay, so, I'm guessing, Jay? And then, but I did want to include, do include perhaps the specificity with the ascent of the applicant about no, uh, no event rentals would be my only conditions, I suppose. That would be, that would be my motion.
What about just, uh, would be limited to church use?
Sure.
During regular operating hours? That would preclude somebody staying there overnight, renting it out?
Is that inclusive enough, do you feel, Mike?
If the concern is some sort of transitional housing where people are staying the night, then it would effectively limit that type of use.
Mine was for, you know, renting it out, like it's got a kitchen, it's got a fire pit for parties or birthdays or events and that kind of thing, that might impact the, right of the neighbors to the right of their property. No outside uses, I guess, or no outside rent. I guess you can't really restrict what the church does, but I guess I would like to at least try to address the neighbors' concerns.
Right. But if it's, if it's limited to church use during regular business hours, that would say we're not, they can't rent it out. I mean, obviously even a lot of established churches have a fee for their own congregation to use facility. So, I, I don't want to say that that's renting it out. That's just a use fee. However, as far as somebody approaching them and wanting to use the facility, I don't really see enough space there to have a big party, um, banquet or anything like that. So, I, I really, I think we're worried about something that's, that's not going to happen. But to, to say, uh, for church use only during regular church business hours would preclude most of the concerns that they have. And getting back to the delivery thing, I, I think that they do have a right to have some, an occasional delivery. So, to, to say that no deliveries, I, I don't think that, that's really right. But you go ahead and make your motion.
Okay. So, here it is. So, uh, paraphrasing a little bit, but, you know, no transitory housing for church use only and, uh, I don't even think we have to address the, uh, delivery. We're not running a conference.
I, I think I would like to limit the deliveries to a, to, you said, a small business, small home business?
That's, that's in the statute.
That's in the statute now?
Are we limiting it to eight period is what the home?
Yeah, if I recall correctly, I think what's codified is that what would be evidence of, um, an intensity of use that exceeds what would be authorized as eight deliveries per day. And that would be suffice evidence to show that they are over utilizing what was desired at the time, yeah. But you could, uh, it's probably suggested just to require that most deliveries occur on the main campus and keep it general.
From the top? Okay. So, transitory, no, no transitory, no, no overnight? Use limited or restricted, rather, to the church, its parishioners, their events? And deliveries, deliveries by and large, I'm not sure how best to phrase that, but deliveries should be aimed at the, uh, the main church, the main church office and brought across to the, uh, the building. Boy, that is not going to read well as, as a motion. Commissioner Wyler, why did you not make this motion? He makes the best motions.
You're doing fine.
Yeah, I don't, help me.
Uh, through the chair before a second motion is, is made. I just wanted to clarify that since this is offering marriage counseling and married couples tend to have kids, that there might be onsite care for those kids during those counseling sessions. So, the transitory housing and broadly applied care facilities is more applied to the overnight stay, where people are actually living in the facility rather than a temporary ancillary use supporting that church office or counseling service.
If, if we say, uh, church use during regular church business off hours, that?
I think that covers the overriding concern, yes.
I'll restate. So, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the project with the condition that the use has occurred during normal church operating hours, uh, deliveries are made to the main church. has occurred during normal church operating hours, deliveries are made to the main church, realistic exceptions, and that's my motion.
I'll second.
It's moved to the second. Do we have a vote? We have five yes votes, so modification to the conditional use permit, PHG 19-0017 passes. We're going to go on to G2, tentative subdivision map, general plan amendment, rezone, master and precise development plan, specific alignment plan, and grading exemption, SUB 18-0005/ENB 18-005, three zeros five.
Good evening, commissioners. This is item G2. It's the Nutmeg Homes Residential Project. It includes requests for a general plan amendment for rezone, a master precise development plan, tentative subdivision map, a specific alignment plan, and a grading exemption for a townhome development on Nutmeg Street. And it also includes a request for certification for environmental and path report, and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. The current general plan land use designation of the site is Office, or O, and the current zoning classification is residential estates 20, which is minimum 20,000 square foot lot size, or RE 20. And as you'll see on the next slide, the location of the properties is the far north end of the city of Escondido. It's right there on the boundary between the county and the city. It's split into two pieces, Straddling, Nutmeg Street. There's the north portion, which would be 2.42 acres after all requested vacations and dedications of right-of-way along Nutmeg and Center City Parkway. And then there's the south portion, which would be 5.03 acres after vacations and dedications. The applicant's original proposal would have covered development of the full project site, both the north and the south portion, with a maximum density of 18 units per acre, which would have given them up to 134 units, assuming a 7.45 acre net project size. The proposal would have required grading and a storm drain connection within the Caltrans right-of-way along I-15, as well as ongoing landscape maintenance of that area. And Caltrans indicated during the draft EIR public review period that they would not issue an encroachment permit for that work. Therefore, the current scope of the project has been modified from its original design as described on the following slide. So we have a general plan amendment of the full project site, north and south, as I said before, from Office to Urban 3. A rezone of the full project site for residential estates 20 to planned development residential, maximum 18 units per acre, so it would be PDR 18. A master precise development plan for just the north portion for 37 units, which would include modified development standards for guest parking, building height, and open space. A tentative subdivision map for just the north portion. A specific alignment plan for Nutmeg Street and Center City Parkway improvements. There should be one grading exemption for a cut slope in excess of grading ordinance standards in the northwest portion of the site. Cut slopes are normally limited to 20 feet in height anywhere on site. The slope and retaining wall in that area would exceed 30 feet. And there's also a final environmental impact report and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. So as I said before, the general plan land use designation right now is Office, which is intended for office uses and commercial uses that would support those offices. The zoning classification is residential estates 20, which is a single-family zoning classification, large lots. As you can see, the general plan land use designation and the zoning classification are not compatible. They have different goals and objectives. The project would change the general plan land use designation to Urban 3, which would allow multi-family development of the density that's proposed, 18 units per acre, and no fewer than 12.6 units per acre, which is 70% of the maximum. And that general plan designation does allow buildings of up to two to four stories. It would also change the zoning classification to PDR 18, which again would also allow multi-family development of this density. The master precise development plan per the zoning code, the purpose of the planned development process is to allow for comprehensive site planning and building design, creative approaches to land use, and as part of the process, you can designate site-specific development standards just for that site, in exchange, a high-quality product with ample open space is expected. The proposed project would incorporate most of the development standards that apply to the median multiple residential zone, the RF3 zone, which has a comparable maximum density of 18 units per acre. The three exceptions are guest parking, building height, and usable open space. The buildings are a little bit higher than what you would normally see. The normal maximum is 35 feet for RF3. I believe they go up to about 39 feet in this project. They're providing one fewer guest spaces than they would normally have to have, and a little bit less open space than they would normally be required to provide. Common open space would be provided in the north portion, including a small park with a grassy play area, a spa, seating area, and exercise station, and in addition to that, each unit would have its own private balcony. There's two floor plans proposed, a two-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath floor plan, which is the bottom one, size 1,104 square feet, and a larger three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath unit would be 1,339 square feet. They're substantially similar. The main difference is, obviously, the top floor, in one you get three bedrooms, the other you get two. The units will be clustered in groups of two to six units per building. These are labeled buildings B, C, E, and F. We did not forget A and D, those were originally proposed just for the south portion, so they may make a reappearance when applications come in to develop that. And I provided just the elevation for building B, just for space reasons. They're all very similar in appearance, primarily stucco and paneling for exterior materials with stone accents in some areas. And here's a site plan of the layout of the units. The yellow indicates floor plan one, that's the smaller unit. There are seven of those, and there are 28 that will incorporate floor plan two, which is the larger. That's the blue color. And for the tentative subdivision map, I'll just point out that all of the drive-ais will be around 24 feet wide to meet fire requirements. There's two entry points into the north portion. There's a main entry, which is the one on the left, approximately halfway across the project frontage, and then there's an emergency access point, which will be gated, which is close to the air section with Center City Parkway. For the grading exemption, as I said before, cut slopes are limited to 120 feet. The area that I have indicated in pink there is the slope that would be covered under the grading exemption request, and it does go slightly higher than 30 feet. It does include a retaining wall as well. So a number of street improvements are proposed with this project. First of all, the Nutmeg and Center City intersection would be signalized. For Center City Parkway, there would be a 58-foot wide strip of land along the west side of the street that would be vacated and added to the project site to help them get the density and the yield that they're looking for. So that would reduce the overall right-of-way from 200 feet to 142 feet. Sidewalk, urban gutter would be installed along the west side, and there would be a partial replacement of the street section, and there would also be grading on the east side of the street to accommodate future improvements. For the southbound side of the road, there would be dedicated right and left turn lanes at the intersection, turning onto Nutmeg and Coyote Beltline. For Nutmeg Street, the right-of-way would be widened, and it would be realigned slightly to create a safer curve on that road via dedications and vacations of right-of-way. There would be sidewalk, curb, gutter, and bicycle lanes along each side of the road, and replacement of the entire street section, and there would also be left turn pockets at the intersection of Nutmeg and the project entrance for safer entry into the project. And just some notes on improvements in other areas. On Nutmeg Street between Country Club and Via Alexandra, which I can actually show you right here, it's the street that's indicated in red. Along that stretch of road, there would be a 14-foot, a 14-foot southbound lane would be added with a curved gutter and sidewalk, and there would be a park restriction along that improved section. Additionally, the traffic signal at Nutmeg and Country, a traffic signal would be added at Nutmeg and Country Club, as well as a shared left turn through lane and a dedicated right turn lane. These improvements were identified as being to be done in the traffic impact report that was prepared for the project because of volumes and capacity ratios that went over the significance level, level of service for the intersection, or a significance level is caused by this project. A slope analysis was done. Our grading ordinance and zoning code both indicate that slopes that are over 35% should be protected from development, except in, you know, in limited cases. There is a substantial slope in the far northwest corner of the site, which contains a lot of 35% and over areas. That would be precluded from any grading or development. And a conceptual landscape plan was provided. Landscaping will include trees, shrubs, vines, and ground covers, and one of the conditions of approval for the project is that they'll have to submit a formal landscape package after approval. It'll have more details on exactly where the plantings are going, irrigation, how they're meeting watering fishings requirements. They're also providing a variety of fencing types and color-coded them. The blue along the project frontage is tubular steel. There is also a block retaining wall in purple, which is separating the bio-retention basins on the far east side of the project site. There is, the pink is a firewall along the north and the west sides of the project, and there's a second retaining wall in yellow, that's the one I mentioned earlier, that's covered under the grading exemption. That's also on the west side of the project. So to comply with the California Criminal Quality Act, a notice of preparation was issued in August of 2018 to announce that the EIR will be prepared. Six comment letters were received. We also had a scoping meeting on September 6th here at City Hall, and a few people attended, and we got some feedback on parking, drainage, and road safety. The draft EIR followed earlier this year, May 24th to June 10th. It does re-identify potential impacts to several factors, such as biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazardous materials, noise, and transportation. But mitigation measures are proposed to reduce all of those to a less significant level. And we did receive six comment letters on the draft EIR, all of which were incorporated into the final document with responses. And as you see, we received a copy on the dais. We did get an email from Arnold Feldkamp, who's a neighbor of the project, last night, and he mentioned that while he preferred that, you know, there were no change at all to the general plan designation or the zoning, they do support the signalization of that Nutmeg-Center City intersection, so overall, they're a paper of this project. And we recommend that you recommend that the city council approve SUB 18-0005 and adopt the final EIR and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. I can answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I've got a couple of questions, whether or not Ms. Oldridge or Mr. Tunnel would answer. But there's 58 feet of vacation that is proposed on Center City Parkway. Is that because the dedication's 200 feet, which is much wider than just about anything we have, and that right-of-way is just no longer necessary?
Yeah, that right-of-way, because Center City Parkway, you know, was, was 395, it was Caltrans right-of-way, and, you know, they typically purchase very wide right-of-ways. And you also notice that a good deal of it is actually up that slope to the east side, so effectively, they were buying slope rights, if nothing else. So what's being vacated leaves the city with a collector's standard roadway, which is what it's designated on our circulation home.
So that's 145 feet?
Actually, it would only normally need to be 84 feet, but like I said, most of that is occurring up the slope on the easterly side.
Okay, so, I mean, what I'm, I guess the intent that I'm trying to get at, we're not precluding ourselves as we move into the future, and if additional street widening is necessary up there to accommodate future traffic?
Yeah, and that was part of, when we worked out the specific alignment plan and the project, we looked at the grading that would be needed in our right-of-way on that easterly side, and so they're going to do, along their frontage, the grading that would be needed in the future when we would ever widen that to the other side.
Some of the traffic mitigation measures that came out of the EIR stated certain improvements, traffic signals and such needed to be put in. Since we're dividing this into, it's almost essentially two projects, if this one goes forward prior to occupancy, do all of those improvements need to be put in? Because that's what it looked like, although the EIR was prepared, assuming one large project. So I'm kind of wondering now on the timing on how this is going to go.
Through the chair, if I may respond, or if you'd like to follow up. The trigger point for it is the first occupancy of the unit, so regardless if the north proceeded with the south or the north independently, the mitigation measure would be the same.
Okay, I just needed that clarification. And one other thing, the intersection improvements at Nutmeg and Center City. You know, I see where Nutmeg comes in, there's another intersection that services several homes on the east side, but they're offset, and I'm wondering, you know, the design that's coming forward, it seems like it may be not typical. And I just don't want there being confusion when people come up to these intersections, and that there's the ability to stop and see far enough in whatever direction before they're making their movements.
Yeah, the intersection is not, you know, not our ideal, and so that's part of the reason why we're doing a specific alignment plan here, to just kind of, you know, approve this somewhat non-standard design. The reason for it is you have the Centennial County, or not the Centi, the Vista Irrigation District, Flume and Siphon come down right there. So where the Flume goes to Siphon is right there, where you would otherwise have lined up the two intersections, and so, you know, that's why we end up with an offset.
So there's just some extenuating circumstances that kind of push this in the direction that it's being pushed?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have at the moment.
Thank you for another great presentation. Could you go back to the slide, if you would please, that, I think top of the slide was talking about some of the improvements that they were going to make. First one, I think, up was a signal.
Yeah, that one?
Yeah. So how many of these, I recognize, and I'm glad you shared that with me, that I think you said it was a traffic study that bore these out, and said a number of these would perhaps be needed. How many of these is the applicant funding or proposing to fund?
I believe all of them, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, all of these are conditions of approval, as well as being EIR mitigation measures.
This script, and I'll apologize to Commissioner Wyler as well, I didn't understand the script along Center City. Do you have a graphic of that, and what's happening there?
Does that help? It's a little hard to read.
It does. Where's the dedication? Where's the dedication?
Um...
It is...
Yeah. There's both vacations and dedications along Nutmeg. They're all very small. And then there's like a wider vacation along the full frontage of Center City. That's the fifty-eight-foot wide one.
But, you know, it was a question that came up about a year ago with a different project of mine, not in the city. What generally is a signalized intersection? What's that cost? Or do you give me a problem?
Yeah. Boy, the cost is going up fast lately. I would say you would start at three hundred and go up. Just the size, it's, you know, it's mast arms and poles to support the mast arms. Yeah, I'm thinking this one here, probably pushing four hundred. It's, yeah.
And then, wasn't the, wasn't the road service there? I thought I saw something from the county that talked about its relative use, and that they saw the county's response to the EIR, where they said, I think, the developer will have to return that to you. At what condition or what standard?
I can't really speak to what the county asked for, but typically, they're gonna be widening, you know, their side of the street. Due to excessive utility trenches, I think we have a standard condition, I haven't double-checked, but it's pretty standard that, you know, due to excessive utility trenching, you know, they might be responsible for an overgrinding overlay.
Ms. Dolman, just one other question. I saw, I think it's page, I suppose it's three, three dash seven, in its response, L two dash two, where it talked about, I mean, it seems like, gosh, there was quite a bit of outreach on this, four tribes, twenty-five other tribes. I just want to be sure I understood, because I thought there was a letter to the contrary. None of the tribes identified any significant travel resources?
No. One of the tribes was concerned because there is a milling site on the south portion of the project, which the EIR states is not significant, and explains why, you know, they made that statement. They wanted to keep consultation open for that, but we do have several cultural resource-related mitigation measures that require monitoring, and there's a very specific list of steps to go through if any resources are found while ground excavation is going on. So we believe we're pretty much covered by now already.
I wonder if, do we know the build-out schedule? The anticipated schedule?
Don't know, and the applicants might be able to answer that when they speak.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Watson, I verified that we do have a condition in our conditions that covers resurfacing Center City Parkway due to trenching.
And their approval, this condition on that, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
And through the chair, if I may quickly interpose. The EIR contemplates a phasing schedule. I don't know offhand what it is, but that certainly does compel the applicant to move forward, to make sure that the EIR document is still relevant and covers the full project. And so when filing any application for the southern part, staff would review the application in compliance with codes, but also to ensure that the EIR document adequately covers the description of the full project at that point.
Thank you.
I have one quick question. What is exactly is a firewall? Is that masonry or?
I believe so, yeah. Block wall.
The eight-foot wall is basically just a block wall.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, does anybody in the audience wish to speak on this? Okay, then I'm gonna call up the two applicants, Jim Simmons and Jason Gremminger.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for taking your time tonight. Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate that. So Nutmeg Homes, we've been at this for a couple of years. We began the process on meeting with your council to get approval, go through the general planning and management process. That was in January of 2018. Since that time, we've been looking at this project pretty in-depth and working with staff to come up with a design that we think is appropriate for the site and appropriate for the community. As Ann mentioned, we are anticipating a maximum of one hundred and thirty-four units on those sides of the project. Base of this project would be thirty-seven units, and that being one of the what we're looking at today. So what we're showing here is the architectural site that we've seen earlier in the day, basically laying out different units and placement on the open half of the project. These are our, I was, the project we talked about, and the project, early history and So what I would like to touch on a little bit is coordination with Caltrans, which began in the very early stages of the process. Actually, shortly after our council meeting in 2018, we reached out to Caltrans, discussed the project. At that time, Caltrans was in favor of the project. We had some communications back and forth. And so on that assumption, we went back and designed the project to the full, what's the south side, which we thought was an appropriate project for the site. And as Ann mentioned earlier, we get to the EIR phases, and certainly the EIR can deliver back to Caltrans. So at that point, the applicant team reached back out to Caltrans to kind of flesh this out a little bit, get their understanding of what their concerns were, and we felt we could try and address those concerns. So we did meet with Caltrans, and basically, based with our engineering, park quality, biology, the whole gamut of their staff for Center California, and came away from that meeting feeling relatively good, and we could find some solutions to this project moving forward. At that time, we came back and said, we mentioned that we were ongoing negotiations with Caltrans, and we were fully working with them. It turns out that Caltrans had reversed course shortly after that, and we had a subsequent call, a phone call with Caltrans, which wasn't, Caltrans wasn't receptive to allow the approach implemented to the project. So at that point, we kind of reconvened, hung together, decided to take another whack at this project and see what was feasible. And so that is over in front of you today, the thirty-seven homes on the north side of the project, and hopefully the remainder of the homes on the southern side of the project. I would like to note as well that when we began this endeavor, we were meeting both requirements for the city as far as parking and open space. That was the northern side, south side to the other. Ann, could you back up for a second? So I think one thing that we want to point out here is that we do have nine, currently shown nine visitor parking spaces on that north half. We do have the ability to add tent space so that we can make up that difference, and that would be... So that little corner, we have enough space to add to visitor parking space. So I just wanted to point that out, that we're good forward with this, there's absolutely the ability to make up that parking space. And the remainder of the open space, we know the market is more tight, the remainder of the open space, we made up, and some with developments in the southern half of the project. Okay, can you go down to the... This is kind of the... Sorry, I can't edit myself here a little bit. These are the, a couple of the renderings of the prototype that we're proposing on the site. You can see, very attractive looking housing. So as Ann mentioned, we are conditioned to improve some roadway segments and intersections. And she did a very good job of explaining that. I wanted to kind of touch on Center City. We are proposing to grade about a quarter acre city roadway on the east side of Center City. Did you skip down some of that? Well, pull me back for just one second. This graphic here that shows the specific alignment for Nutmeg, as you can see, the photo of that, if you would, that I'm sharing, it's kind of a drastic curve to Nutmeg. The graphic on the right, the plan on the right, is the proposed specific alignment for Nutmeg. It actually softens that curve out quite a bit. We did our best to soften that curve to make it as safe as possible, but it is a challenging location there because of the Caltrans overpass on Route fifteen, it kind of restricts how much you can curb that road. So that's what we're wrapping up. This is, this is the Center City piece I would like to talk about. So on the southeast side of that plan graphic there, you can see a little, about point-two, three acre area. That's city right-of-way that we are proposing to cut and grade, so that any future improvements that would be built out to the collector's standard for Center City would be able to maybe let the city adjust to that. That's about twenty-two fifty-five cubic yards of nothing to be taken. Some of it rock. So with that, I would give it over to the panelists.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commission members and staff. First of all, I have a missus. I've been doing this for a lot of years, I think forty-five, and I don't think I've ever gotten into a situation like this. We spent two years working with Caltrans, getting feedback from them in writing that they liked what we were gonna do, they thought that was a good improvement, it would improve their drainage, it would help them if they were to expand Route fifteen, who were already filled, that would be something that they could look forward to. Something happened in the process, and we came back, EIR, and they came back and said, no, we've changed our mind. And if you want to get this done, you have two options. One, you can sue us, kind of like suing the US government, I guess. And the other one is you can go to Sacramento, and we looked into that. And the truth is, Sacramento is, that could be a five-year process. So we stepped back and said, how can we work this out? And I would like to commend your staff, Mike in particular, Mike Stone in particular, in saying that there is a way to work this out, and that as we can go forward with the north, we can get the process approved, EIR approved, and give you the opportunity to come back in the second step to redesign the second piece. As a positive, we meet all standards that we need to meet for the city, and we will meet them. And what we're trying to do is work with your staff to come up with a solution to this. We've already spent several million dollars in two and a half years of working through this, so we don't want to lose the opportunity. We're working very carefully with the neighborhood. They're thrilled that we're gonna build the intersection for them. It is a little bit askew, but that's mainly because of the flume and the process, and we can't move that. However, what it does do is it provides turn lanes and it gives some confidence to those people who live on County Phil. Plan, that they can get in and out of that without the danger that they're currently experiencing there, which makes them all the worse. The improvement on the east side is something we volunteered to do, mainly because it would help align our frontage. If you didn't do that, our frontage would not align properly, because your improvements wouldn't be done on the east side. So we volunteered to do that. It is a benefit to us because we need the derivative. So we're gonna put that here on the site, so it's not gonna be all the way as we move across the street. So all in all, I would like to say that we had a very good experience with your staff, and it wasn't easy for either of us, them or us. But we came up with a solution we think is a good one. I think you can tell by the number of people that are here tonight to speak on this, that we worked with the neighborhood, we tried to resolve their problems, and I think we have a good project. We'd like you to approve it and move forward with us. And if you have questions, I'm perfectly happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Because I was concerned about two things, not only the streets and those sort of things, but on the project site specifically. And Mr. Gremminger said that, yeah, you're willing to put in that extra parking spot. I think that's a very good thing. I would like to see that. And then also the lack of open space, usable open space, we can be assured that that's gonna be provided for on the south side, so that in aggregate...
Yes.
We're gonna get all of that.
Yes. You will see that again.
Yes, and I have to assume that you're gonna be coming back relatively quickly because...
Or not.
There's no way thirty-seven units are gonna support...
No.
All those street...
But what it does do for us, excuse me for interrupting, but what it does do for us is it gives developers some assurance that you can move forward, you can pour another chunk of money into the process to get it done, and it's not out there guessing whether or not it's gonna go. So that's what we're doing.
I kind of assumed as much. All right, thank you.
One quick question. These are all gonna be for sale, correct?
All for sale. It's in a price range that I think is gonna be in a low force to the high force.
Actually, that was gonna be my question, what's the price range? That's how it's affordable.
Yeah, it is. It's low force, it may be the low fives, really, it depends on what the market is. It has its ups and downs, but I do think that that's where we're headed. We asked a question earlier, what's the schedule? Just as fast as we can make it happen. We've got a lot of money on the table, a lot of time invested with your staff as to, we want to build the same ground square as we can.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Does anybody else want to speak? Did you say you wanted to speak?
Yes, I did.
And when you get done, would you please fill out a speaker slip?
Hi, my name is Kerry Moe, and I live on North Nutmeg. And I just found out about this project just a few days ago. I have three concerns. Well, number one, you mentioned the signal at Center City and Nutmeg, because that's a blind curve, and it's very dangerous. You're almost like playing a restaurant, try to pull out in the left turn and head up Center City, which I have to do with my motorhome sometimes. If you go to the right, it's not quite so that. A signal would be very helpful there. If you had more people there, they're gonna be pulling out on Center City. I can see there's a lot of accidents there. The second thing is the drainage issue. Since we put in, I've lived there since seventy-four, Echo Valley Lane and Nutmeg, and when they put this fifteen freeway in, there is a culvert that comes from the lower part, you know, the south side of Nutmeg, right? The low part goes under the freeway and comes out into an open ditch, runs all the way down on the east side of Nutmeg Street, all the way down and goes off on the golf course. And when it rains, we have a good rain season, all the private driveway culverts that are along that street overflow, one on Echo Valley Lane overflows, and the water comes right around my house. That's happened several times, you know, over the last thirty years. And so I'm concerned about putting all these additional units up there in that area where the water drains across and comes into that open ditch. I don't have the idea of what kind of drainage kind we have, but if there was additional water that's going to be put on that, on that open ditch going down Nutmeg, that will cause a lot of problems and a lot of private overflow going along the road. The third issue is the traffic issue. Right now, we have Moon Nursery, big trucks coming down, it's kind of a cut-through road, and plus the Country Club's putting another three hundred and eighty homes on Nutmeg. And I see they're addressing the issue from Country Club to Alexandria. Nothing was said tonight about what's gonna happen from the freeway on Nutmeg going on down to Country Club. The road is in horrible condition, and just a two-lane road, and like I say, all those houses, when they're added there, they're gonna be going to Vons, Costco, to the freeway, and they'll be coming down Nutmeg. And so I just want to ask what kind of improvements, or if any, are gonna be made to the Nutmeg Street between the freeway and Country Club. So those are my three concerns. So those are my three concerns.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak? Okay, close the public hearing. And ask for discussion.
The gentleman just brought up a couple of good questions. And what additional, if you can just clarify, what additional improvements are going to be occurring along the project if it goes down towards Nutmeg?
Yeah, the traffic impact study did not identify that segment as, I believe, is either operating poorly now nor, you know, triggering any kind of impact. But it did identify the intersection of Nutmeg and Country Club for a signal and also the segment that's being widened. It's not being widened 14 feet. It's only being widened a few feet for a total of 14-foot-wide lane there, in case you were wondering about that.
And that came out of the EIR process?
Yeah, out of the EIR process and the traffic impact report that was done during that process.
Okay, and then the other question about stormwater. Now, I know when new developments come in, they contain all their stormwater on site, so I would anticipate the same thing is going to occur here, where it's actually going to probably improve the current situation.
Yeah, I mean, the north side that's being approved today, tonight, or being presented tonight, about two-thirds of that site actually flows the other way, flows kind of to the northeast corner and maybe one-third towards the drainage course that was described just now. And so for that portion or all portions, they'll be detained back to their pre-project flows as well as stormwater, the stormwater basins will detain the low flows as well.
And those would just be focused into the north?
Yes. When the south side, which will, you know, does send more drainage that direction, is presented and the details become available, same thing. We'll be looking to make sure that post-project flows are at or below pre-project flows.
Okay, thank you. You know, the only comments I really have at the moment is, and I can support this change. And the reason I can support it is a couple of reasons. An office designation in that location, I don't think it would have ever worked. It's just a poor location for an office type of use, at least in my opinion. It's at the convergence, kind of a Center City Parkway and I-15. I just think it's an appropriate place for a little bit higher density than maybe some of the surrounding areas. Create maybe even a bit of a buffer between the freeway and the residents to the east. You know, this project's proposing a lot of street improvements. I would hope and suspect that maybe there's some fair share of costs that would be going back to this applicant. You know, when Country Club comes forward and does their improvements, it seems like there's some overlap improvements there. But overall, I think it looks good and I can support it. Even the increase in height, I don't really have a problem with it in this instance because it's not affecting really anybody else. We're talking four feet. I just don't have an issue with it. I would like to see the additional parking and then some assurance that we're going to complete the usable open space on the south side when they're restored. But other than that, that's all the comments I have.
Couple of comments. I was so encouraged to see a developer bring forth a project that meets the market requirement. I should probably talk about that. I think that is the clean-to-jour business. So I was super happy to see that. I was happy to see how they're bringing in everything, either under the right curve or over. You know, they brought it just right, 39 feet. Gosh, there's no, I didn't see it for hundreds of sidelines out there that it's worth being interfered with. I noticed, I think, Andy, your presentation was awesome. I think you mentioned a part of it. There is quite a bit of open space, and I think the developers giving those assurances that, I mean, we've had a few chats in recent meetings with meeting open space requirements. They're exceeding. So I was happy to see that too. You eat with your eyes, I suppose, and it's visually appealing. I found it visually appealing. And, but more than just visually, gosh, it was nice to see something financially appealing that, you know, somebody can get into. You know, first-digit four or five, gosh, what a tremendous opportunity to get into a more affordable house that's new, insurance. That I was excited about. But then when I saw softening that dangerous curve as Nutmeg, curve rather, as Nutmeg swings around there, I thought that was pretty smart. But I was also happy to see, yes, the developer advised a commission to drive the benefit from the grading along Center City, so you can use it there. But for future expansion, I think the city could derive a benefit there as well. And I guess I should have assumed it, but I didn't. But when I realized that curb and gutter, probably 300, 400,000 conservatively on the signal, is also making this plus, the developers willing to go down and make this happen. Maybe the project had to serve this for a little more coverage. Thank you.
Would you like to word the motion?
I move to approve.
It's S U B 18-0005.
S U B 18-0005. With the stipulation that the developer places the additional parking stall in for 10 guest parking spaces and assurance that the balance of the usable open space is taken care of on the south side. That's second.
Okay, we have five yes votes. S U B 18-0005 and the environmental 18-0005 pass.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no current business. Does anybody in the audience want to speak about any current? Seeing none. Our next meeting is?
November 12th, and the November 26th meeting will be canceled.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Okay, then we are adjourned.